That's seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Solstein?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Stenner?
Here.
Counselor Urban?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Gow.
Here.
Please stand for the Budget of Allegiance.
The Republic of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Okay, items to be added to the agenda. We're gonna add a proclamation.
So moved.
Got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll read that under item seven. Item four, appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by providing officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council's discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take the comments under advisement for discussion and action at a further council meeting. Okay, inside I have Bonnie Sannell.
My home address is Cottage Grove.
You got a number address?
I do, and I'll tell you privately.
You need to give an address to speak, ma'am.
I don't think that that's really fair.
That's part of our rules.
It's 33739 C Jack Road.
Thank you.
I remember a few years ago when we had a revolving door at the jail, I knew way too many people that had been broken into. Most people don't want to have their medical information out there. So I'm representing, or I'm speaking for, at least one and maybe two people that I know that live locally, who I've been told that you're interested in adverse reactions to the COVID vaccine. And these people either have been adversely affected and/or know people personally that have been. First, oh, the first person, she wanted to make sure that she was really anonymous, and the people she talked about were really anonymous. So I'm going to be very avant-garde and refer to everybody in the plural, so that there is no discrimination, or no, they can't tell whether it's a male or female even. So, there goes. COVID vaccines should not be mandated, and they wrote these things for me. COVID vaccines should not be mandated for anyone, but especially not for children who are at such low risk, such a low risk for serious complications from COVID. The vaccines themselves have very serious health adverse reactions, more serious than side effects. And they are not being reported as required to bear. Part of this is wanting to remain anonymous. And theirs is the vaccine adverse reporting system, because healthcare workers are afraid if they do report that they will lose their jobs. And this person said that she knows of several healthcare workers who would not report and said the patient needed to report because they were afraid that if they added their names, they would lose their jobs. It says a lot about that so many healthcare workers have refused to get the vaccines. I know of over two hundred healthcare workers, not personally, but I met them from Peace Health that refused to get the vaccines and lost their jobs. They have seen the adverse reactions firsthand. And by the way, they worked safely for a year and a half without having the vaccines. After getting both doses of COVID vaccine, I immediately started having short bouts of severe dizziness, then started hearing the blood poosh through my head every time my heart beat. My doctor heard a heart murmur never before heard in my sixty-four years. This person went to the doc regularly. And sent me to Oregon Heart and Vascular Institute for a scan. It turns out that I now have four leaking heart valves. My eighty-six-year-old mother had the vaccines, and every joint in her body started hurting afterwards. And her knuckles are now enlarged and crooked. It sounds like rheumatoid arthritis to me, but was it just a coincidence? She asked her orthopedic surgeon, this person asked the orthopedic surgeon if it was caused by the steroids that had been injected into that person's knee. The surgeon told this person that it was caused by the COVID vaccines, a known adverse This person that I'm speaking for said, I know personally of two women who had severe hemorrhaging after getting the vaccines. One, a previously healthy seventeen-year-old, has now had thirty-six blood transfusions and been locally hospitalized multiple times. All of these cases were in my very small circle of family and friends. Because of COVID, I do not go out to group organizations where I would most certainly learn of more cases such as these. Nobody should be forced to get an untested and unproven medical procedure where risks are high and long-term effects are unknown, especially not children. All right, do you read the other one?
You need to wrap it up. You're over your time.
All right, I'll read it next week.
Thank you. Okay, I have Andrew Kalik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name's Andrew Kalik. I live in Eugene, and I am a candidate for Congress here in the fourth district. This, I was joking with some other folks earlier, is traditionally known as Pete's seat. I see Pete right on the wall here. He's served with honor for thirty-six years, but this is the year that we have a chance as a district to think about what we want in that next generation of congressional leadership. I am thirty-seven years old. I have three children under five. My wife is a graduate of Pleasant Hill High, and we have many generations in this part of the state. We are lucky to be able to be raising our family here, and we know that so many in our communities don't feel the same way. They see their kids or their grandkids go off to college or career, and they don't necessarily come back to where they're from, not because they don't love it, but because they're worried about the state of education, they're worried about economic opportunity in their communities, they're worried about housing affordability. And we need a new generation and a new approach to leadership in Congress to tackle those challenges. So I wanted to come to you in Cottage Grove, as I am in communities across our district on the coast of the Cascades, to introduce myself, to say a little bit about the types of leadership that I will bring to Washington. It's a leadership rooted in humility and integrity. I certainly don't think that I know the answer to everything. In fact, I'm certain that I don't. And what that means is that I'm going to be coming to communities like yours and asking you straight up what you think the challenges are and what you think some of the opportunities for solving them are. And I'm gonna need help. I'm gonna need help every day from people like you who are on the ground and who have the pulse of your community. I'm happy to answer any questions you have now about my candidacy, my experience, civil rights attorney, I've worked in nonprofit sector, I've worked in government itself, I've also worked in the private sector, so I'm bringing all of those experiences to bear in Congress. I'm also bringing the experience of a millennial. I am in my late thirties, which means I've faced many of the challenges of millennials, huge student debt out of school, couldn't pay it off till I was in my late thirties. As a result, couldn't afford a home until that time, and I get a childcare bill for $3,000 a month, the first of every month. I'm the lucky guy. I'm the one who can afford to pay it. So many can't, and we need someone with that perspective in Congress for the next generation. Again, Andrew Kalik, happy to answer any questions you might have. I'll hang out in the back, and I'm grateful for all of your service. Thank you.
Thanks. We won't engage with you now, but if you hang out for after the meeting, we can talk with you.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone online or anybody in the room. Johanna Zee?
Yes, hi, thank you. So my name is Johanna Zee. I'm at 316 Quincy Avenue. And last meeting, Counselor Fleck had responded to the comments and the many testimonials that people had shared in regard to their losses in the past couple of years by saying, "I'm not convinced," and in summary, "I don't know what you want, we're just following CDC guidelines." So this lack of empathy is actually quite frightening in someone who is in a leadership role. So I'd like to address, I think I've only got time really to talk about what is it that we want. I know that in the cease and desist order, we were pretty specific in that it wasn't an order, cease and desist declaration, excuse me. So I want to be clear first, is that we're not trying to convince Counselor Fleck of anything. But there are some points that have to be really clear. We want you to exclude yourself from any decision-making process on this council regarding anything related to COVID. Why? Because you have a clear conflict of interest. The nonprofit that you are the executive director of has received millions of dollars in grant money, per your own admission, during this so-called pandemic. You are also partnered with United Way, which is a very radical organization with a very radical agenda, with probably the highest number of complaints for any NGO out there. You're also on the Budget Committee of the School District, which took in over nine million dollars in ESER funds to mask and vaccinate the kids, which is part of the criteria in order for them to receive the funds. And you also, probably worst of all, is you sit on the Advisory Committee of the Lane County Public Health, which is very much invested in maintaining this narrative. So I ask, you know, who is it that's benefiting, and you are the one who's benefiting from keeping this narrative going. Why? I don't know, whether it's the power of prestige that comes with handling a whole lot of extra money, or furthering your political career, or perhaps bonuses, I have no idea. But you can't ethically make decisions for this city while you are so invested in maintaining these lies. So this also applies to anyone who has immediate family members who are also as part of these organizations. This is just a clear conflict. And again, ethically, someone should exclude themselves when they are so tied in to these direct resources that are coming their way in order to continue this. So specifically, similar to what the cease and desist declaration said, we would like all the so-called vaccines to be stopped in this city, all the mandates immediately discontinued, the discontinuation of all the discrimination that is based on people's medical status, being unmasked or unvaccxed to stop in places of public accommodation, and all the propaganda, including the signs, the audio recordings, and the printed materials must be stopped now. The people here deserve truth from their leaders. We have an opportunity. As I sit here, another teenager, an athlete, is in one of the local hospitals. You know, because to participate in the sports, they have to get the shot. And, you know, he's sitting there with heart issues, and we can help people. We can help them by telling them what they can do to minimize the potential damages. We're seeing a lot of heart attacks and strokes. We know the truth, we have the truth. I think we have an obligation to put that truth forward so that we can help people. You know, I've got a friend in his forties who went to howbadismybatch.com, howbadismybatch.com, and plugged in his lot number. He got the J&amp;J shot about a year ago, and sure enough, he says, you know, "I guess I got a really bad one. I didn't really plan on living forever." You know, but it's cases like that that we can say, look, there's things that you can do to minimize your risks until we can figure out how to get rid of these toxins from people's bodies. We have this information, and to withhold it is just unconscionable. So how many people, I want to ask you, Counselor Fleck, how many people are you willing to sacrifice? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, so no public hearings. We'll move on to item six, consent agenda of approval. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So item seven, we have a proclamation of support for the people of Ukraine. Whereas the nation of Ukraine and its people and those of Ukrainian descent have been subject to unnecessary fear, pain, injury because of unwarranted attacks on Ukraine by Russia, and whereas communities throughout Oregon have joined in and offering whatever support can be provided in our Ukrainian friends and neighbors, and whereas the leadership of Russia has engaged in a direct and intentional violation of human rights and should be held responsible for the loss of human life and loss of property resulting from this truly apprehensive act, and whereas the unprovoked attack on the citizens of Ukraine is an affront of the foundation of the international relations. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Gow, Mayor of City of Cottage Grove, on behalf of the City of Cottage Grove, do hereby officially stand with those who are experiencing very difficult situations because of this unprovoked act, and join with our leaders across Oregon and the United States and the world in condemning Russia's aggressive and offer whatever support can be provided to our Ukrainian friends and neighbors. Our thoughts and prayers are with Ukraine and its citizens and the Ukrainian Americans. In witness whereof, I do have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Cottage Grove to be affixed on this twentieth day of February 2022. Brings us to item eight, business from the city council. Award of Engineer Record contracts. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. So back in October of 2021, the then-current city engineer Ron Bradzwe announced his retirement, and it was effective December 23, 2021. I researched how other similar cities met their engineering needs. I found that just in reviewing fifteen cities that are, you know, in the ten thousand, somewhere between ninety-five hundred to eleven thousand population, that currently nine of them contract engineering services, and six of them have actual city engineers on staff. Also in Lane County, all the cities except for Eugene and Springfield have contracts with private engineering firms, except for Cottage Grove. The cities with contracted services spend somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty-five thousand per year allocated in their general fund budget for day-to-day services, such as reviewing applications for building and planning applications. They also support the city staff with advice when making repairs or improvements to city infrastructure. Additional engineering services for projects are budgeted in both the city's capital improvement and reserve funds. While researching the options for provision of engineering services, I posted the city engineer job. It was posted on November 15, 2021, and closed on December 3, 2021. The posting was advertised in the LOC posting, also on the APWA job recruitment in the Register Guard and the Cottage Grove Sentinel. Two applicants applied, with one withdrawing one week after the job posting closed. Over the past five years, there have been five postings for positions in the engineering division downstairs. Two of the postings closed with no applicants, one with one applicant, and the final two postings had three applicants with no experience or educational training in engineering. Presently, the demand for individuals in the engineering profession far exceed the amount of available applicants. The current adopted city engineering budget for 2021 to 2022 is $388,220. That doesn't include an additional $50,000 where the city engineer position is allocated to the street, water, storm, and sewer funds. The budget includes three full-time employees and operational expenses. Today, there is one full-time employee and a part-time employee, providing six hours per week, less than half the funded positions. The current staffing level is causing delays in project designs, application reviews, approval of approvals, and project management. The difficulty in filling vacant positions still remain a reality. So in consulting with legal counsel, a request for proposal was created for a city engineer of record. It was prepared. The RFP process began January 23 and closed February 4. Two responses were received, one from West Yost and a second from Branch Engineering. Both engineering firms' proposals met the RFP requirements and provided a complete list of engineering services for water, wastewater, stormwater, structural, surveying, geotechnical and specialty, such as mapping, modeling, project management, contract administration, bidding and specifications, floodplain, floodway permitting, wetland permitting, NEPA documents, EQ permitting, water rights, development review, and transportation services. The director and former city engineer interviewed both firms, questioning about process review times for applications, availability, how they work with other cities, billing rates, what support they would need from the city to perform their work, et cetera. West Yost has a small office in Eugene, and their primary specialty is in water and wastewater services. They have put together a team of seven additional subconsultants to offer a complete line of engineering services to Cottage Grove. Most of the subconsultants are located around the state. West Yost is currently the city engineer of record for Sweet Home, and West Yost has worked on projects for both the water and sewer treatment plants for Cottage Grove. Branch Engineering's main offices in Springfield, where the majority of the engineers and professional staff reside and work. Branch is currently the city engineer of record for Coburg, Vanita, and Harrisburg. Branch has designed street, water, sewer, and stormwater improvements throughout Cottage Grove. They've also performed traffic studies, surveying other special services for the city. Both firms' billing rates are similar, with Branch being less overall. Both firms have worked for Cottage Grove and are very familiar with Cottage Grove's infrastructure. The projects Cottage Grove is undertaking are becoming more complicated and require several different areas of engineer experts to design projects, such as civil, structural, survey, wetlands, geotechnical, et cetera. We often find we need to go out to bid for services or projects because specific expertise is required in addition to what the city has on the staff. This will, by contracting with a firm that has all the services in-house, will save time, money, and be more efficient for the city Cottage Grove. An additional benefit having a contracted city engineer record is where it can be direct awarded to the firms under contract instead of having spent time sending out RFPs for specific purposes. Staff is proposing contracting with both West Yost and Branch Engineering for engineer of record services. Branch Engineering would be used for everyday engineering needs, and West Yost would be used for water and wastewater treatment needs and projects they have designed, such as the affluent reuse pond and irrigation system. West Yost would also be used if needs for additional services exceed Branch Engineering's capacity. So the recommendation to council would be to move to approve the two engineer of record contracts with Branch Engineering and West Yost, as presented and authorize the city manager to sign those contracts and all associated documents, including task orders issued thereunder for projects included within the city's budget. And the cost at this time, there's no cost until actual services are provided by each firm. So I'm here to answer questions.
Counselor Savage first.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna reiterate my understanding, just like I did Friday, and then I have a couple more questions. From everything that you just said, it sounds like historically, over the last five years, we've had openings for engineers, and we have either not had any response, or we've not had enough people in the pool to make an adequate choice. And this is not for lack of trying, it's just the folks aren't out there. And so currently, we have an engineering department, but this proposal would allow us to get our engineering needs done by these two firms. Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Savage, that is accurate. I would say that not all the positions were certified engineers, they were assistant assistants and also engineering technicians, which don't require an engineering degree to apply for.
The next question that I thought of as you were talking this evening, the budget for this department is $388,000 a year, but that's for three full-time employees. And currently, we have one full-time employee and one very part-time. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we're using probably half of that budget. Is that?
Yeah, I would say that's probably accurate, yes.
Okay. And then, in order to move forward with, I don't know if it's both Branch and Yost, but that would be between $15,000 and $25,000 projected a year to tap into their services to help for our engineering needs.
Counselor Savage, that would be for day-to-day items, projects that, you know, let's say we did, in the past, we did an expansion for the water treatment plant. The engineering costs to provide documents for the expansion were billed to that water reserve fund. And so projects that are specific as we move forward would be billed directly to the street, water, storm, and sewer, just as they are today. So there will be additional engineering services provided and additional costs, but they'll be very similar to what we are paying today for specified projects.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Counselor Fleck.
So I'll kind of reiterate my questions from Friday as well. You know, the one question I have was around, we're doing permit services for Coburg, Vanita, and Crestwell. And I guess I was wondering if there was gonna be impact there, where we'd wanna check with our partners, and I was hearing that that would not be a huge portion of engineering services. Is that correct there, Mr. Stewart?
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor Fleck, that is correct. We do not provide engineering services to Coburg, Crestwell, and Vanita. All we provide is building permit services, so their engineering reviews and services are taken care of by each city individual before we receive the building permit application.
And my understanding as well is that our current civil engineer will be more of a project manager for those projects that come forward, and then taking care of some of the day-to-day stuff in addition to those services. Does that sound accurate as well?
Yes, it's my intent that that position would focus mostly on the project administration and less of the engineering design work that an engineer would do. and less of the engineering design work that an engineer would do.
Thank you.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Faye, does, if we pass this, does that mean we will cease trying to find more in-house help for Ryan Sisson assistant-wise or it'll just be Ryan downstairs at this point?
At this point, I would recommend just, just Ryan's position, I wouldn't seek any additional support.
And then my other question, I was muffed because I don't have my headphones on. Who is going to watch the fee schedules that come in from West Yost and the other company?
Actually, I'm working, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Roberts, I've been working with Ms. Lichens. We're proposing that one of her finance staff would be overseeing the billings that come in and assuring that they're appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any of the counselors online got questions? Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions pertain to what the kind of real-world effect would be for the service to those doing projects in town, citizens, residents of town. I guess I'm a bit ignorant of what needs an engineer sign off, what kind of project does, are there home projects? Is this mostly just commercial? And in your discussion with these other cities that are contracted in a similar fashion, what kind of turnaround times are they seeing in comparison to what we were, were and are able to do under our current structure?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Irvin, so in the day-to-day work, what takes place is, is we, we receive an application for let's say a single-family home. The intent is, is that single-family home would be reviewed and the comments that are necessary to place on there such as how they hook up and where they hook up to the current city infrastructure would be handled in the planning department with the planning staff. If a larger project comes in such as, let's say, the eighty apartment complex, we receive another one of those, that project would be asked to be reviewed by one of the engineering firms. We start with branch and in talking to them, in most cases, if they can receive the necessary infrastructure documents that they need, they can turn around that project in, in five to seven days, working days, which is at the present time, much faster than what we've been turning them around because of the sheer workload downstairs with the staff. So I would, would predict that the turnaround time would be quicker. As far as inspections, once again, the planning staff and building staff would be looking at sidewalk inspections. The utility crew would be, they're certified in water and sewer connections, they would be looking at the sewer connections to make sure that they were done properly. So we would still handle all those items in-house and be done generally in the same day as the request is made.
Counselor Stenit.
Have to admit to being a bit concerned, it seems like something that's important and involved. I would love to keep that in-house if we could. I recall quite a bit of friction with our building permit process before we brought it back in-house. I mean, I guess I might need some reassurance. It sounds like we're basically dissolving our engineering department and going with someone else. And I mean, you know, keeping an engineer and making them a project manager sounds like a demotion and I'm not sure someone would want that and maybe that, I don't know, it just seems like. A very big step and, you know, the assurances can be there that people will be served adequately, but I don't know. I mean, it's just a concern I have, so.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Stenit, I understand your concerns and I have, will do my best to make sure that those concerns are not, that they don't come about. It's my goal in taking this position here is to improve service and make sure that we can serve our construction community and the needs of our citizens with the best service and timely service. And right now, we do use a lot of outside engineering firms, so this really isn't too far from what we're doing at the present time. It's just we won't have it. We still will have an engineer on staff, but the focus of that work will be closer to project administration instead of engineering projects where that individual needs other expertise such as structural and wetlands and geotech which that individual doesn't have that we have to contract out for to. And if the firm, you know, both firms have those, that expertise, that project is given to them and they manage it timely and know what their project timelines are and they don't have to go out and do additional requests for proposals and contract agreements with other firms to do those projects because it's already within their firm. So I, I share your concerns and we'll make sure that we don't jeopardize the service we're providing in Cottage Grove.
Counselor Irvin.
Mr. Mayor. In a, in an ideal situation where you, where you can find qualified staff, you have kind of all the bases covered that of engineering. Areas that we need in town, can you speak to what, what is ideal? Is it ideal to have your own engineering staff fully qualified with all the positions that were being advertised for? Is there a certain, is this based partly on the growth, future projects that we see coming down the line? I guess more, what is this a response to if, is it, is it simply we just can't find the staff within budget to do the work? Is that, is that really what's driving this? And if it is, if we can find the staff at a future time, are we locked into this contract? In such a way that we couldn't pivot back to this model that we have currently or would like?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Irvin, so to answer the, the later part of the question is, is we can terminate the contract at any given time, there is a termination clause. So it is a three-year contract if it goes to its full extent and it is renewable for two one-year periods. And then if the city chooses to continue to contract, we would go back out in five years for another request for proposal. So if, if things change in the city and quite frankly, if it's not working out and we realize it's not working out in a six to a month to a year time, we can change the direction that we're, we're going. The second is, is as I stated in the, in the report, one of the problems we have today is, is that the engineering needs are so diverse for projects. It's not like it was back in the seventies and eighties where one engineer, you know, really qualified to do most of the engineering work that was required for projects. And today with, with wetlands, with geotech needs, with structural needs and all that's entailed, for us to have a full-service engineering staff to where we paid for that individual to be on staff per year, I mean, we could be looking at possibly having six individuals on staff and possibly paying in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in compensation for each person. So we would in essence be increasing the current, current budget. So that, that is one of the challenges. If we were to do it, what it would take to have a full, a full staff complement to do the projects?
Counselor Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stewart, I would like to say that I do support this completely. The way I understand it is we have been contracting out a lot of our engineering needs anyway. And anything that, if, if we're going to save the city some money here by doing this, I think it's worth a try and we cannot, like you said, we can always cancel the contract if, if needed be, if it's not fulfilling the needs. And I also want to commend you, Mr. Stewart, because when you say that it was your goal to expedite the permit process, I can tell you that I, I have heard from a lot of builders and contractors that you have definitely done that since you've come on board and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I trust your knowledge on this.
Yeah, and I do support it as well. I know that civil engineers and all engineers are getting to be a short supply for high demand, so it's, it's hard to find them. So if we can do it this way, because on those big projects, you're going to go outside anyway, so. Might as well just do it all that way.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. If Mr. Sisson goes from being a civil engineer to a project manager, I'm going to ask a really awkward question. Does that change his rate of pay or are we going to continue paying him as a civil engineer acting as a project manager?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Savage, the intent is to pay him at his current rate of pay. There wouldn't be a demotion in pay. But if, if Mr. Sisson at some point in time decides that that isn't working for him and he chooses to take a position somewhere else, then I would recommend that we would post that position at a lower range. And more of a project administration type of a position. So our answer is no, that, that won't require a pay cut.
The, the next question is, I'm sure that Mr. Sisson knows that this conversation is happening. Do we know how he feels? Would he be okay with going to more of a project management position?
Counselor Savage, I haven't had the conversation with him because of the, your fact is I don't know what the council is going to do. So I didn't want to have a, a conversation with him saying that this is my intent and where I'm headed without knowing that the council would support moving to contractual services.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for answering my questions.
Counselor Fleck.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approved the two engineer of record contracts with Branch Engineering and West Yost as presented and authorized the city manager to sign those contracts and all associated documents, including task orders issued thereunder for projects including within the city's budget, included within the city's budget.
Second. A motion with the second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay, item B is audit committee appointment. Ms. Lichens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to let you know that the council has appointed a subcommittee to conduct interviews of the applicants for a vacant position on the audit committee. We had one application from Brandon Parsons. The subcommittee did meet on Friday, the twenty-third of February and did a virtual interview. At this point, I would like for you, as a staff recommendation, to consider the subcommittee recommendation concerning the appointment to a three-year term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And I believe Counselor Irvin would have a report for you.
Well, first I'd like to say, or extend my apologies to my fellow council members who were conducting this interview when I was not there. So I apologize for missing this one. And that being said, from having not participated in the actual interview, my understanding of Brandon Parsons is that he's highly qualified and I would look to the recommendation of the rest of the nominating committee here and put forward a motion that we appoint Brandon Parsons to the three-year term set to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. That's for the audit committee.
I have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel Roberts.
I enjoyed the interview with, with Brandon Parsons. I have some good stock in those numbers. Looking forward to working with him on the audit committee. He has been secretary of Southland Wheels for the last four years, very involved in the community and very much wants to get more involved. I think this is going to be a good pick and a good fit for our audit committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any more discussion? Counselor Fleck.
Ditto.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, concerns of council. Counselor Fleck.
Well, gosh, I was going to try to keep quiet tonight. So I guess I just want to give kind of a brief overview of what conflict of interest under state law is. Basically, a conflict of interest is if you derive any income. A decision you made would, would impact your, your income as in what you make as money. So sitting up here on the dais, if there were an issue to come before the city council that I would have a benefit from, where either myself or immediate family would, would benefit from that decision, I have to recuse myself. That's called an actual conflict of interest. There's also what's called a potential conflict of interest. A potential confluence, conflict of interest is if, say you're in a class, say I'm a contractor and we're making some rules based on construction. That's what's called a potential conflict of interest. I would declare that conflict at that time to still be able to vote. I am happy to share those rules with anybody who's interested. And I do try always to be as ethical as I possibly can. I guess the reason I want so many boards is because, you know, I really care about our community and what goes on here. And so I give a lot of my time and I say give because as most people know, we're not compensated at all for this. So all of our time up here, all of our time in committee work, all of our time on any of these other committees that we serve on, we actually receive zero compensation. In fact, often it costs us money because we're, we're traveling and we're, we're incurring expenses. So I guess I just wanted to share that with you and I'm certainly always open to have these conversations with folks, but I think just for clarity, I think we need to kind of review what is a ethical violation and what is not. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just giving update as pertains to one of the subcommittees, the Lane County Workforce Partnership. I believe that's the, seeing the acronym, but I think that's the, the flame. I had an occasion to meet with the interim executive director new to the position just to understand the role, the staff of what agencies they work with. And my, my hope is to, as I understand that more, be able to direct. Resources and projects and things that are going on here in Cottage Grove to connect funding and opportunity to residents here. It's a Lane County-wide, but I think we have a lot of potential here in town to, to improve our, the workforce and to improve education opportunities and connection to, to jobs. So trying to do some groundwork there. We'll look forward to continuing to meet, I think, on at least every month or two basis to that end. I believe that's it.
Counsel Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Greg, that was a, that was a really nice rain meeting. I was one of the people that was going to vote against that program. That was my second rain meeting and there were, I believe, sixteen young entrepreneurs at that meeting that wanted to reach out on how to get their business up and going here in our community. That program seems to be growing. The mayor was there. Our assistant city manager was there. There was a lot of network going on and it was good to see. So I'm hoping that this program shows some fruit. Some groups were already talking about maybe trying to get one of those new smaller units of the city route at the industrial park where they could work together in one, one thing and cut their overhead down to get their businesses going. So yeah, you know, it starts with a dream and it can, it can create economic. So, yeah, you know, it starts with a dream, and it can create economic development and jobs in our community. So I think the program might work really well out for us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say the rain was really, really good turnout, and everybody seemed to be networking really well. And I enjoyed going down there and being part of it. And I also want to thank Counselor Savage and her three lovely kids for helping me the better part of yesterday move. So that was a very, very thoughtful of you. Business, or a report from the city manager?
Just a couple of items. On Friday, we reported that we had sent out the policy to all the city employees that would rescind all of our emergency policies dealing with COVID, the COVID leave, the mask requirements and everything associated with state mandates. Today, the governor changed that date from the 19th to the 11th at 11:59 PM. So our policies will go to 11:59 on the 11th as well. In addition to that, we've asked Lane County when their emergency declaration is going to, if they're going to renew it when it expires at the end of March. They don't know yet, so we'll keep you informed on that. The state's emergency declaration will expire on April 1st. So the Lane County one will expire on the 31st if they don't renew it. Ours is tied currently to the Lane County Emergency Declaration. So in our emergency declaration, we said it'd stay in place as long as Lane County was in place. If they decide to extend that, we will come to the council and say, hey, do you guys want to change the language in the emergency declaration? And rescind that since we've removed all the policies and don't see any need to have anything else in place. So we'll keep you informed on that when we hear more from the county. They haven't talked about it yet, so they, they don't know what they're doing. Have April 5th marked down, Tuesday, April 5th, as the town hall for homelessness. If anyone cannot make that, let me know. And I think everyone has nodded their heads that the Tuesday, April 5th works. And so we'll keep that on the schedule and plan for that at 7 o'clock on the 5th. And it will probably be in the arm. The last item is on April 4th, we're having the kickoff meeting for the new YAC, for the 2022 YAC. Since these things are going away, we're going to get the youth back involved. We put application forms out, we have them on the webpage, so if you know of any youth or you know of somebody who doesn't know that they want to be involved in the YAC yet, please encourage them to apply and get those applications in before by April 1st. That's not a joke, just turn them in by April 1st. And then on the 4th, there will be the kickoff meeting. All of the council members and the mayor are invited to that kickoff meeting to meet and see the applicants and everything, too, on that night at 7 o'clock on April 4th.
Then, Richard, will we be doing the rotation of counselors once again after the actual YAC meeting?
Yes. So we'll start that back up again.
Is that located here?
Yes.
We have no city attorney, there's no items removed from consent, so we are adjourned.